Hello. All right, we'll go ahead and call to order at 6:02 PM. The first order of business is the City and County of Honolulu Monthly Reports, starting with Honolulu Fire Department.
Things are happening. Is this supposed to smoke? No, just kidding. Can't take me anywhere, right? Oh, there I am. Okay, so statistics provided our representative of Engine 3's response through the month of July. Engine 3 Makiki Fire Station responded to two structure fires. One brush fire, six nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and 12 fire alarm activations with no fire. We responded to 130 medical calls. No motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians. 13 motor vehicle collisions and one mountain rescue. The fire safety tip for August is back-to-school fire safety. Educating students on what they can do to stay safe during the school year is important and often overlooked. College students living away from home should take a few minutes to ensure they are living in a fire-safe environment. Don't overload outlets. Keep lamps, life fixtures, and light bulbs away from anything that can burn. Never use an extension cord with large appliances like a refrigerator. Cook only where it is allowed. Keep the cooking area clean and free of anything that can burn. If a fire starts in a microwave, keep the door closed and unplug the unit. If a disaster happens, knowing who to call and where to meet is an important part of emergency planning for you and your family. Pick one main contact locally and one contact out of town who may be easier to reach during a disaster. Hold your applause.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for any questions, starting from the board first.
Hi.
Hello.
Yep, go ahead, Claire.
Chair, thank you, Chair. While I have HFD here and I think HPD is on, I want to give a nod of gratitude and kudos. I was first on scene for a vehicle versus scooter Sunday morning.
Oh.
No worse feeling than being an ER nurse with no supplies or equipment. So all I could do was eyes, ears, and hand and wait and prepare to intervene. It's an awful three minutes, but guess what? In three minutes, I heard a voice over my shoulder saying, "I'll take it from here, ma'am." And I turned and looked, and it was a firefighter holding a cervical collar, which answered my one prayer of the day. So thank you very much for being prompt and courteous and professional. HFD for helping, HPD for helping me clean up. But the one I really noted was when all was said and done and the person was taken away in ambulance, y'all came around and asked if we were okay, all the onlookers, and that was just the best gesture for the public. So thank you all for that.
You're very welcome.
Okay, well, I think we noticed Ian Ross next, so we'll pick him and then go for Richard. Ian?
This is regarding the fires at Leheleho. There was a course of fire in this past week. But this isn't a series. According to neighbors, this is the third fire in the same location in as many months. You know, one of the things that comes up very often is people report trespassing. And then shortly afterwards, maybe a day or a week afterwards, is fires set by the people who are trespassing. What can the community be doing to be more preventative with these fires being set by individuals on other people's property regarding, especially when HPD won't respond to trespassing calls from non-owners? Thank you very much.
Okay. Just one question. I'm not familiar with the fires you're referring to. Were they rubbish fires?
I am not quite familiar with the exact category of fire that's been set. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, because the type of fires does, I guess, lend itself to a better, I guess, categorizing of information that could be helpful. So generically speaking, I guess the number one thing is just to try to make sure that anything that you have that is disposable, flammable, et cetera, and placed outside is in a place that is not close to the main structure. Preferably in a non-combustible container like a metal can or dumpster, et cetera. But yeah, without more information, I can't really speak to ways to prevent what's been going on.
Perhaps Ian is referring to maybe a structure fire at 1525 Leheleho?
That's right, the third fire of its category in the location about three months. It's a structure fire. There's a lot. Squatters come in and they light fires and endanger the neighbors who do take action to call the police and HPD, but no actions taken until the fire gets just a reoccurring issue.
So I did go to a fire on Leheleho. Actually, or was that Kiwalo? I forget. We went to one where it was actually caused by a young child playing with a lighter. And ended up, he was trying to kill roaches with a torch-style lighter, which, you know, for a four-year-old seems like a good idea, but we all know not a good idea. And ended up lighting some furniture on fire, but so that's just kind of something everyone's very familiar with. You know, make sure you don't have any incendiary devices that children can reach and make sure you secure all those types of devices and try to educate your children for fire safety. Honolulu Fire Department Fire Prevention Bureau does have an education section that has a fantastic program for kids who are fascinated with fire. And if you contact our Fire Department headquarters, they can give you more information.
Okay, Richard?
Hi, Captain.
Hi, Richard.
That door that we were talking about downstairs with that latch.
Yeah, not safe.
Yeah. Can the Fire Department, has anybody here seen a fire escape plan on one of the walls someplace? Because I'm concerned about that. Here we are in this corner.
Well, just having a dead bolt, a latched bolt like that on the outside. I mean, anyone could come by and just kind of latch it for fun and light the place on fire. Yeah, that's extremely dangerous. So yeah. That's not good.
So are you folks allowed to tell this building to remove that latch?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll refer that to our Fire Prevention Bureau and see if they know who to contact to make that happen.
That's the only stairwell out of here, right, besides the elevator? Is anybody familiar with the building? As far as I know, there's only that one stairwell plus the elevator.
As far as I know, but.
Yeah, so that should be a designated.
So if you see me jump out the window, you might want to pause.
Yeah.
No, I'm kidding. Don't do that.
Okay, if you have, please look into that.
I'll contact our Fire Prevention Bureau as soon as they get back to the station.
And secondly, really quick, all these fires were seen in these isolated places. There was a fire in Wahiawa where the football team, kids' football team lost. So there's no electrical connections, so it's either arson or somebody's accidentally set this thing?
Well, I mean, without looking into anything that the investigation found, I couldn't really answer any particulars for any particular fire. There are many, many ways fires start, accidental, intentional, careless acts, et cetera. But yeah, we've been seeing a lot of fire with many different causes in the last few months. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Corinne.
Yeah, I just wondered if maybe you could ask some coworkers or supervisors and inquire and get back to us at the next meeting to elaborate on the question I think everyone's asking, which is when homeless people are setting fires in abandoned homes or in abandoned buildings, what is the best way we, what can we as neighbors do? Or what do you recommend we do to try to avoid this problem? I understand that you can't comment on it today, but if you could just find out. Yeah. At least that's a question many are asking.
As far as us trying to minimize fire risk and so forth, the best advice I can tell you is try not to give them anything that burns, you know, which is a lot easier said than done.
But these are abandoned buildings and we aren't giving them anything.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if you want to inquire and get back to us, that would be helpful.
Well, I mean, as far as abandoned buildings being burned and so forth, it generally falls upon the homeowner to secure said property. There's not a lot the Fire Department can do on that, unfortunately. But there have been extreme instances like the property at Pensacola that has burned, I think, three times. I think you guys are all very familiar with the extensive history of that and how difficult it was to get any action done on that. So it's unfortunately not an easy fix. Yeah.
Thank you. Next, Ian, did you have your hand up again?
Yes, I just put it in the comments, but just tacking on to Corinne, because this is the main question I was getting to. I think it might be interpreted as a lot of neighborhood boards do, jumping on our speakers. I don't believe Corinne and I are doing that. We're asking for, we're not necessarily blaming Honolulu Fire Department. In fact, they seem to be the only actors who are competent and doing their job here. Thumbs up for me. But this is a clear and present danger for our community, period. We're just looking for things that can be done. Guidance from you folks would be helpful. Are you willing to go in on testifying for certain bills or their laws that need to be changed and work with us on it? It's a clear and present danger for our community. It comes up as the number one issue I hear from neighbors. And we really want to see both recommendations from you. And if possible, you know, if these are hard structural problems you can't do much on, is it something we can team up on and find a pathway together? Because this problem is not going away. It's only getting worse.
Yeah, absolutely. An entire section of our department is devoted towards fire prevention. And that is actually their specialty. At the end of every neighborhood board meeting, I or whatever captain is here writes up a report about, you know, questions that were asked and so forth, and any follow-up that needs to be handled. Basically, it sounds like what you're looking for, especially someone to testify at meetings or hearings, et cetera, is generally something that our Fire Prevention Bureau specializes in. We're kind of at the fire truck level. We're kind of a mitigation after the fact, you know, to stop it from growing further. We do what we can to aid the Fire Prevention Bureau's mission and so forth. But in our department, there's probably no one better equipped for what it sounds like you're looking for.
Okay, thank you, Captain. And we'll go on next to Sam. Did you put your hand down?
Yeah, yes, I did.
Okay.
I just, I just wanted to reassure that two meetings ago, we talked about the door. We said, hey, this is a danger. Specifically talked about it. Did anybody get in touch with the Parks Department? You know, that have them remove the lock? I mean, it's obviously a violation. That was two, that was two meetings ago. Did anybody from your safety department get in touch with the Parks Department? And if not, why not?
I was unaware of that until just today. In fact, today is the first time I've set foot in this building, so I am sorry.
Well, they had other firemen in the meeting. And we even got locked in the building. Somebody locked the door and we couldn't leave the building because of it. And we said, what the hell? What's, you know, I'm a locksmith. I looked at that and I said, you know, this is a, this is a city and county building. It's owned by the city and county. Why do they have bars on all their doors and everything? They need to do an inspection on not just this building, but all the buildings in this park. And why haven't they started? And why is the representative not getting on them and saying, this is a public health issue? This is a safety issue. I think we should put it at number one priority.
Well, I'll follow up with our Fire Prevention Bureau and see what steps need to be taken on that. And thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think we'll go with, since we've spent quite a bit of time on this, we'll go with Harris, then Steelquist. And if there's, and then we'll go with like two people from the general audience, and then we'll go ahead and so we'll go ahead with Harris.
Thank you very much, Captain. I'm here to not give you bad news, but good news. You know, it's very important, you know, part of the Nice Neighborhood Committee, which is a committee that was set up just the previous meeting. So as a response, the residents at 666 Prospect had asked us to come to check out their area in terms of the Punch Bowl area. And part of the, I reported later in the meeting, but part of it was the notice along the Punch Bowl area of many dry brush that could create that fire. So one of the residents at 666 gave me the contact, which is tied to the US Army Garrison Hawaii, who is responsible, kind of oversees that property, the fence on the inside of Punch Bowl. So I sent the email per the request. They responded. And so what's going to happen is that Mike Donnelly, who is with the US Army Garrison Hawaii, he will, we'll start a project in terms of a community service project with the single soldiers who are available over the weekends. So they will come out to volunteer to start to clean up that brush. And then we're going to get involved, all of the JROTC from Farrington, McKinley, and Roosevelt, to also help. And they start to create that. So as we start to move and mobilize, and I'd like to make sure that somehow I can let you folks know. And then somehow we come together to, as a community, to support and try to look at getting involved to prevent fires that might occur and take away a lot of that burning material.
That's awesome.
So we'll be in touch.
Well done. Yeah.
Okay, John?
The fires we've had recently on Maui and Billy and I, so on, have been brush fires. Have we had an investigation for brush fire areas in Makiki? Because there are places where we have. So where do you have and what's going on there?
As far as, like,
possible brush fire areas in the Makiki area, whether along Roosevelt, place like that.
I see. Well, I mean, fortunate that most of our brushed areas are in the tentless round top area where it's very wet and very green. So that has helped a lot, keep us fairly safe from that. Actually, the Punch Bowl area is probably, you know, the most concerning, as well as some small lots between properties that are vacant and not being upkept. But fortunately for us, they tend to be smaller areas, spot. And, you know, with the amount of water supply, we can normally get in there and put out before it gets very far. So we've been very lucky with that type of fire in our area. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Now open it up to questions from the public. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on your name. If you could go ahead and step up to the, yep, come up to the microphone.
Okay, I'm here to talk about 1525 Pensacola, Leheleho Street, sorry. So you know where we live, we can see. So as soon as we, my daughter woke up, she said, Mom, there's a pop, and she smelled fire. So I ran onto the Lanai and took a video of them shooting on the property.
It's probably one of the other watches that we.
Yeah, so. That property was like, you know.
Yeah.
And so we were, our concern is, you know, there's a preschool there and the neighbors. Now, we've been smelling chemicals. Could it be drugs that they're making? I mean, it could be anything because you know how they are. So after the guys left, well, seven something, so nine something, they came back. And then about, I think, 11, we called HPD. So this one officer kicked everybody off the property.
Captain, if we could have you speak into the mic so the rest of us can hear. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I'm so used to people not wanting to hear my voice. This is a new thing for me.
No, no, no. So that's our concern, is the safety for the neighbors.
Oh, absolutely.
And you know, like us, we have asthma, right? So we have to close the windows with the AC on. Even with the AC, we could still smell it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So my question for whoever is able to get information, who owns that property? You know, needs to be, you know, action needs to be taken. I spoke with neighbors on Leheleho Street yesterday. And, you know, they're talking about legalities already.
So June, this is later on the agenda, so we'll come back to this in more detail. Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions for the Fire Captain while he's still here? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Captain. Thank you so much for everything you do. And we'll go ahead and move on to Honolulu Police Department. Is a representative from the Police Department here. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. If they show up, we can come back to them. But otherwise, Board of Water Supply.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Michelle Harmon. I'm a representative from the Board of Water Supply. So today we have a report for our main break, and that occurred on July 9th, 2024. The six-inch pipe and the address was 1968 Makiki Street. The install year was 1930. For our general water announcement, we have some flyers in the back. And if anybody wants me to email you, or if you want to take a photo of the QR code, feel free. It is a survey to assess water access and affordability. So it has to do a lot with asking folks who are most vulnerable, are you able to pay your bills? What kinds of bills do you need to prioritize, that sort of thing? The survey will take about five to 10 minutes to complete, and it'll assist the Board of Water Supply to implement programs that better help the most vulnerable citizens on our island. All responses are confidential. And that's all I have for you today. Oh, and we have an event coming up September 28th from 10:00 to 2:00 in Kapolei Regional Park. There are a lot of family interactive events, workshops, and lots and lots of booths from government and community organizations. So I have some flyers in the back as well, and I can also email or text that information to folks as well.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and start with Corinne.
Yes, I have a question about the IAA plume of oil that was recently detected. Do you think that there's any danger to the public or potential future issues with the water supply in this part of town? As a result of that?
So it was a detection at the IAA wells, and when we retested, we didn't have the same results. So I encourage everybody to go to boardofwatersupply.com/protectOahuWater. And we have all our latest information there. If you go to the search bar, you can also type in, for example, PAH, and you'll get our media report and everything on our website. And then I can take your questions and report back to you a more full answer next time. And I think next month, we also have somebody coming to talk to you about our water future as well, so that would be a good time.
Yep, that sounds all right. Are there any other questions from board members? Seeing none, are there any questions from the general public? Okay, if you could go ahead and come up to the microphone.
A homeowner at 670 Prospect. My question is, in terms of the Board of Water Supply, are there any projects that are in the works for upgrading the system in the area of Punch Bowl? And how old is that system right now? And I understand you may not have the answer, but if you could maybe get it for us.
Okay, so we can definitely answer that more in full next month when we have a representative coming to talk to you about our plans and our infrastructure. Oh, and I forgot to report that we had a question if water pressure for Green Street was, if we had a historical record of that. And no, we don't keep those pressure reports. We only do it when requested to make sure that the water meets minimum standards. So we don't have a history of those numbers. We're always happy to come out and test those, the pressure.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from anyone else? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. And we'll go on ahead and move on to board business. Filling a vacancy, there should be one in Sub District 2 still? Residents interested in filling a vacant board seat must bring current proof of residency to the board meeting or contact Neighborhood Assistant Rachel Cristobal to verify residency in advance. We have anyone interested in going, running for the vacancy in the Sub District 2? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to approval of the regular meeting minutes for Thursday, July 18th, 2024. Someone have a motion to adopt the minute? Okay. All right, so we have the motion by John Steelquist and seconded by Claire Santos. Does anyone have any corrections to make? Seeing none, are there any objections or abstentions? Acting the minutes as written. Seeing none, we'll adopt those meeting minutes by unanimous consent. Moving forward, for the establishing the Nice Neighborhoods PIG and a report from the Nice Neighborhoods Committee, I will go ahead and start with the report from the Nice Neighborhoods Committee.
All right, thank you very much, Chair. Our last meeting was held, actually, our first meeting that we had was on, held on July 29th, Monday, July 29th. And we followed up on a couple of items. One is at the previous meeting, 1454 Kenau Street in terms of the homeless encampment and, I guess, drug activity. And I have to say, within a week, Chuck Lee, as well as myself, through HPD, but also Tom Heinrich, who is tied with Representative Bellotti's office. through HPD, but also Tom Heinrich, who is, uh, tied with Representative Bellotti's office, as well as Andrew, which is, uh, which is Calvin Say's office, joined us on that Saturday morning. And, uh, and since then, uh, the encampment has been cleared and ongoing monitoring by, uh, HPD and the narcotics and vice. So, um, what I've noticed is through follow-up of that area, uh, has been the movement of the encampment, it's kind of like, uh, like a floating, uh, vessel moving around. So I have a meeting, uh, I, I scheduled a meeting next week with Sam Moku, who is with the city, and, uh, John Mizuno, who is with the state, that both of them oversee the homeless. And so we're gonna have, uh, a discussion in terms of developing the strategy, uh, because, uh, that's necessary. As we clear out an encampment, we want to be sure that it, it doesn't just recirculate. So, um, we're gonna be meeting, and I look forward to bringing, uh, that discussion and information back to, to the board. Being on the twenty-nine, we also had, uh, a new item on the agenda, six-six-six Prospect. And, uh, Kathleen Gleason, uh, 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 commented about, um, some homeless activity, drug activity, uh, as well as a lot of dumping along that, uh, Prospect Street. And so, um, that following Saturday, uh, we met at eight o'clock. And Claire was there, and Kathleen, and Steve, and some others from the, the condos. And we saw the, took pictures of the, the washing machine that was discarded, uh, some homeless encampment in the vehicles. Uh, and, uh, actually reported that to, um, I, as I said previously, I sent the email to the US, uh, Army Garrison. So they'll be following up, and they're interested to work with us. And, uh, in terms of, uh, looking at a solution. So I think that's a positive thing, is, is working with us. And, uh, also, one of the things that we're looking at is a lot of the dumping in the area. One of that driveway area is actually their driveway. And so a lot of that will be, uh, coordinated over the next couple of weeks, so we'll continue to follow up. Our next meeting is set for, uh, Monday. Usually we have it on the last Monday of every month. And, uh, items, um, that are brought up at these, at, at a regular board meeting can be referred to the Nice Neighborhood Committee. And, uh, so we can, uh, do the follow-up. But really, what the intent is, is that if their residents will come with concerns and, and have interests, then if you let us know, then we'll follow up. But it will really require residents to get involved. And one of the, the good things is that, uh, as I mentioned, our first at one-four-five-four Kinal Street, when we cleared the encampment, and they're aware that six-six-six Prospect, they actually, the residents from one-four-five-four came to six-six-six Prospect. Show of support. And so, uh, having community support and follow-through, uh, is all about the game. And for us, we're looking at solutions, and, you know, we have HPD, we have HFD. Uh, they're all, do, all working hard. But I think if we come together as a community, get involved, roll up our sleeves, and then participate, I think there's, there's a lot to be said on that, so. And then our elected officials, uh, definitely have come out and supported us. And so we have to, uh, recognize and thank them also. So anyway, um, again, the next meeting and, uh, agenda is, is part of it. So, yeah, we have a, the next meeting is on Zoom, but I'm trying to ask the, uh, Neighborhood Board Administration to create that. Uh, they have a, uh, what was that, um, Rachel?
Oh, so currently we're using WebEx.
Yes, so we'll look at transferring over to WebEx, uh, hopefully in the September meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I know I have on the agenda, uh, kind of perhaps setting up a PIG, uh, to help, help you with your work. But, uh, and I talked to Dylan Buck from the Neighborhood Commission, uh, and he gave me some advice. And so I have to sit and read through some stuff, and basically, we can, we can skip over the establishing the PIG unless anyone has any objections. Uh, because you guys are doing some good work in the committee, keep it up, uh, keep us informed, and, uh, that's, um, go ahead.
Here, yes, Harris, uh, two things, there are social services, a component of your activities, like when you go to these places, do you have some, somebody from some social service? You know, yeah.
Yeah, so, so the idea right now is we've, uh, of what was brought to us was really utilizing, uh, our elected officials and their resources, but also HPD. But now, as we clear out encampments, then I, what I foresee is discussions with the city and the state in terms of when you talk about social services and all that. So all the resources will be kind of laid out so that we have a game plan, so that we're not just clean. We clean the area, then we're following that, that movement so that we can continue to monitor and clear it up. So that maybe those that are truly homeless, we can help them with shelter, those that are, that need, uh, that, that have, uh, mental health and need, you know, in terms of clinical, uh, services, then we can help them. And then those that are, are dealing drugs and creating a lot of, lot of crime and so forth, then we got to deal with that too. So that's how I see it, but I want to hear it from the city and state in terms of supporting what we're doing. And then with every step that we have, we have city council, we have the representatives all in there. And so, working together, I think it's been quite successful, yeah, Chuck?
Yep, go for it.
Yeah, adding on, adding on to what Harris said, you know, um, what I think a lot of people don't understand sometimes is that some of these things take time, and the reason why they take time is because there's a process that everybody has to go through, whether it's a, especially a legal process where they can't just go barge in and just, you know, rip people out of the certain areas and stuff. So if, if the, if all of you could just be a little patient, that it, nothing is going to happen overnight. But as you can see what Harris said, there's tremendous progress in, in the Nice Neighborhoods, uh, efforts, and, you know, it does take time, but because of what Harris has done in getting all the stakeholders involved, the city, the state, HPD, et cetera, et cetera. And the, you know, those agencies are growing as we meet with everybody. Um, and, and like he said, like Harris said, you know, the support of the, uh, the general public is really important, and it's contagious, like what he said. You know, the fourteen fifty Kinal went up to Prospect, and then who knows what's going to happen after that? I think you can feel the momentum going. So, you know, I encourage all of you to, um, you know, become part of it, attend our meetings that we have too. Thank you.
No, thank you, Harris. Now, you guys are doing a great job. Is it possible, I, I'm working, I can't be there at two to three. Is there any thoughts of moving it to like, uh, six PM or seven PM?
Uh, oh, um, Claire, I'll interject, uh, with a comment from online, uh, for, I believe it's directed at Harris. Uh, part, um, from Amanda Kirby, uh, Partners in Care would be a good resource for making a social service game plan. Core, uh, could help if they have availability to step out of Chinatown.
Thank you.
Claire?
Thank you, Chair. Um, Harris, if you're looking for more volunteers to join, I'd love to be on the committee.
You're on, very good. I mean, that's the purpose. And so, you know, if, if people come to our meetings or, or through Zoom or whatever and share their concerns, and if we follow up and reach out to you, and if you don't follow up back up things that, your, your, your agony, because we need you guys to be involved. So that's, that, that's the only way that we can help solve it. And so it requires, we got to go fifty-fifty, right? And so that helps, and then definitely with our, uh, our, uh, support, uh, definitely they, they need, um, uh, that participation, so thank you.
Okay, uh, any, any other input for the Nice Neighborhoods Committee? Seeing none, uh, thank you very much, Harris and Chuck. Uh, and we'll go ahead and move on to the next items, sixteen seventeen Ala Pay Street, and question of any new information? And I believe we have a resolution before us regarding that as well. Uh, so, uh, would you like to make a motion to adopt the resolution?
A motion to adopt resolution in opposition to the Bill Seven Affordable Rental Building at sixteen seventeen Ala Pay Street as currently proposed. And I give tax map key and building permit application number on the resolution.
Okay, and then Chuck from, uh, excuse me, a second from Chuck. So we'll go into a discussion now. Um, as the, um, the person who made the motion, uh, Claire, go ahead, you get the first crack at it.
As we all know, affordable housing is an issue in our town. And the residents of Ala Pay Street are not denying fact. However, um, Pivot Development and Ala Pay Development have gotten together to purchase a property on the corner of Ala Pay Street and Prospect Street and erect a sixty-foot structure of affordable housing units, fifty-three units with eleven parking stalls on a very dangerous intersection and a very narrow street. We have many areas of concern about this proposal. And, um, I believe the community has a lot to speak of in that regard this evening.
Okay, uh, so talk about this, so I'll keep the, I'm keeping somewhat concise, uh, to the stated rules of speaking. Uh, everyone has their three minutes. Uh, so we have one speaking in favor. Uh, do we have anyone speaking against the currently proposed resolution? Uh, Richard? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, we do have a serious need for affordable housing in our community. Um, I can, I would like to see this project in other form, cut down the number of units, but I would not vote to totally stop this project from happening. Uh, I live in a condo, Victorian Green, we have condos on all four corners where I live. Uh, and we get along. I understand the, the parking issues. I recall, um, about fifteen years ago, we're the old YWCA corner of Wilder and Punahoe. So the YWCA said we're going to sell it to a developer. That was one of our biggest turnouts in opposition of that project. The traffic would be untenable. Uh, and there are various reasons, it's just not the right place or something like that, you know, right across the street from Punahoe. Uh, but it was built, and it, and it folded into the community quite nicely. So I'm willing to hear the opposition, um, but again, on the basis of, yeah, you know, on the basis of the critical need for affordable housing, and these are one affordable housing units. Thank you.
Okay, uh, before I come back to Claire, um, would anyone else like, uh, so we'll go back to, uh, speaking in favor of the resolution. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the resolution? Uh, I know there's a number of members from the public here, I believe, in favor, so if you would like to come up and speak at the microphone?
Aloha, board. Um, thank you for what you do, first and foremost. Um, I introduced myself earlier, I'm one of the homeowners at six seventy Prospect. Kahale Moi is comprised of two buildings, six-six-six and seventy Prospect Street. Um, we are bordered by Ala Pay Street. Uh, all of our parking goes onto Ala Pay as, as well as a neighboring apartment building. Um, I have with me a petition that was just started yesterday, uh, in opposition to the project as currently proposed and to Mr. Kuanos' concern. None of the owners who have signed this petition are against affordable housing. All of us have family members, friends, acquaintances, coworkers who are in need of affordable housing. That housing has to be designed and developed responsibly and in a pono fashion. That is not what we're seeing with sixteen seventeen at all. The petition that I'm going to present to you, and there will be many more signatures to come, which we will supplement, raises the following major points, and these are not all of the points. The first is that the building density, which will be built, there are two parcels that Pivot Development and Ala Pay purchase. It's effectively Mr. Paul Lamb's development. Uh, the building will be built on the upper slope of Punch Bowl, which is part of a special district. As a, uh, affordable housing project, the, uh, proclamation from the governor allows for streamlining of permitting and allows for no setbacks or, or no limitations on setbacks, as would be the norm. No height restrictions, no density restrictions, no parking requirements. There's no consideration, as far as we can tell, and we've been down to DPP, uh, three times now. There is no consideration for whether or not the infrastructure in that location can even sustain this building. These are all concerns that you as the board facilitating voice of owners and governance, fair governance, should concern about, as are we, and this is why the resolution is so important. I heard Ms. Santos say that the rest.
For interrupting slightly, if I could have you summarize your remarks?
I will.
Thank you very much.
I heard Ms. Santos say that, uh, the resolution is in opposition to the project as proposed, not entirely. And that is our position as well, as long as the project is properly vetted. So the main points are building density, parking, congestion, inadequate infrastructure, fire and safety issues in terms of whether or not the fire truck can even access that area, uh, traffic. And again, the Punch Bowl Special District, that should not be ignored. In other neighborhoods, such as Diamond Head, affordable housing has been carved away. And that should happen with our special district as well. So I'd like to present this to you, and, um, with that, I'll let some of my other neighbors speak.
Thank you very much. Uh, if we could go ahead and, or just go ahead and put the, the petition on the site for now. And then anyone who wishes to sign it, uh, if you could do it after the, yeah, okay. Oh, okay, all right. Uh, I guess we'll go ahead and pass this around, um, and so as not to take up too much time, uh, since there's quite a few people who would like to speak on this. Um, Sam, are you speaking against?
Well, I'm, I'm in the middle, but I have a question.
Okay.
Has anybody looked at the bus route in this area? I mean, they're talking about getting rid of all the parking in the building, having no parking for anybody. You would think that the city would be looking at that as part of their revamping of all the, the bus routes. Um, I think that should be in, an addition to the, the concerns of the neighbors, because you're going to have a lot of people trying to go. And I don't live in the neighborhood, so I don't really know where the bus routes are for and where they go. But that would be a major issue if I was living in that area. That's the only thing I have to add.
Yeah, I believe Claire has an answer for your question.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Sam. Yes, the nearest bus routes are on the other side of Ward Avenue or further down Ward Avenue. Or you can walk all the way down to Magellan. None of those are particularly safe when the sun goes down. Um, I only know about two of my neighbors who venture that way, and, uh, there's three of my neighbors who venture that way, and, um, otherwise, there's one. And otherwise, there's one from who lives right now at sixteen seventeen Ala Pay, who walks all the way down to the Bus Depot down on Ala Pay, the other end of Ala Pay there.
Wow.
No bus, no bus next door to this development, no.
That's crazy. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Go ahead.
Aloha. Board members and city and state representatives, thank you for being here. I was hoping that Mr. Lamb would be here so we could have this important dialogue. So, maybe he'll be at the next meeting. So, my name is Anne Smoke, I'm a homeowner. And as you all know, a six-story, fifty-three apartment building is planned for construction along Ala Pay Street, directly across a twenty-foot-wide dead-end street from where I live. The project known as sixteen seventeen Ala Pay is currently in the permitting process and has been submitted as a Bill Seven Affordable Housing Project. I and many others here this evening, and many more who will be coming to the next meeting, support building affordable housing. We just ask that it's done responsibly. And the current plan is unacceptable. To come to fruition, sixteen seventeen Ala Pay relies on numerous exemptions for building density limits, setback minimums, height limits, parking stall minimums, and other zoning and building requirements. These building requirements were thoughtfully and lawfully adopted to preserve the quality of Honolulu neighborhoods, to keep them safe and livable, to ensure that the environment is protected and that respectful consideration is given to cultural concerns of our hosts. The irresponsible development that's being done, without transparency, by the way, and without due process, our rightful public input feels like government running roughshod over residents while favoring entrance of commercial developers. And at what cost? Well, it's at the expense of homeowners who work hard actually to maintain our investments and to renters who are stretched each month to pay rent to keep their families in a livable community with breathing room, proper steward, sewage, parking, and safe ways for pedestrians. And that includes our new neighbors who will move into sixteen seventeen Ala Pay Street. And as island residents, actually, we should all imagine what downtown Honolulu and surrounding districts already dense in development will look like five years or ten years from now if developers are given carte blanche to do whatever they want without community input and without the responsibility and without responsible and proper regulations. The sixteen seventeen Ala Pay Street plan, as is, raises serious concerns, as Michelle just pointed out, about overcrowding inadequate infrastructure, including sewage and electrical, fire and safety, difficulty in managing that, traffic congestion in an already stressed neighborhood. And the lack of due process and community engagement is unfair and unacceptable. Consistent with this board's mandate, as set forth in RCH Section two thirteen one oh one and two thirteen one oh two, we're requesting the board's full support in addressing these concerns and preserving our community's interests. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As that was a testimony in favor, do we have anyone speaking against the currently proposed resolution? Yep, go ahead and speak into the microphone, please.
So, I'm not prepared, like everybody else here. But I'm just going to use an example of what was built at fourteen twenty-seven Ernest Street. That was a Bill Seven, and not that so much it was, you know, same thing that we weren't
I'm sorry, could we have your name, please?
Oh, Richard Kez. And we weren't notified that this was, building was going to be built, it just got built. And there were so much problems. Fortunately, bringing it to the board here the last few months, we've had major improvements with a lot of things. But still, major issues. And yes, we do need affordable units, like everybody agrees. But it needs to be transparent, period, all the way across the board from front end to the back end. Because right now, even as today, we still have major issues at fourteen twenty-seven Ernest Street with crime, drugs, parking, domestic issues. And I did a letter, I gave to some people here of a response from Mr. Lamb's Corporation that said it didn't exist. But I have proved, it has been approved, so I gave him a lot of pictures and stuff, which some of you have. And I'll pass it out to you folks. But we need transparency across the board when any of these things get built. But yeah, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I believe he was actually speaking in favor of the currently proposed resolution. So, do we have anyone speaking against the currently proposed resolution?
I think I would characterize myself as in the middle, and I need more information. But more against than for, I suppose. So, I have a question. Is there a timeline that the neighbors who are opposed to this development are looking for in terms of, I guess there are a cutoff date or a deadline for when the permits might be approved? And is there, you know, any problem if we didn't pass the resolution, for example, at this meeting, but pass it at a future meeting? I'm just wondering what the timeline is.
I believe Claire has the answer to that.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Corinne. The current application is, it is not an approved permit at this time. It's just been sent back to the architect for markups. We're asking for the resolution opposing this construction as currently proposed. We are in favor of affordable housing and construction. We would just like it to meet the requirements of the Special District Design Guidance for Punch Bowl, which is a forty-foot height limit from Prospect Street, not a
So, in terms of a timeline, my question was about a timeline, deadlines, things like that.
The timeline is in the hands of DPP, but we're coming to you today, or the community is coming to you today for support that as, as proposed, we are against this. We can do a separate discussion and resolution if, in fact, Paul Lamb and company choose to modify their plan. But as of this time, he is not in favor of that, so we need to have the opposition. I have written to Mr. Paul Lamb, and he has declined to adjust it. I suggested making it Capuna Housing with nursing students on the third floor. He just wants the sixty-foot tower. So, it is imperative to our community that we oppose that particular plan.
Okay, thank you, Claire, and thank you, Corinne. So, we had a clarifying question, so we'll go ahead and, Ian, would you be speaking against the currently proposed resolution?
I would be speaking against, but I believe we just had someone against.
Okay, yeah. So, is there anyone willing to speak in favor of the currently proposed resolution?
I think we just incorporate what was said earlier. And we have a number, as you can see, other residents that will resonate the same thought to the comment about delaying this process, that's not acceptable. This is a process that has been in permitting for several months. As a Bill Seven project, it is by design streamlined without notice to the neighbors. And so, and I have personally been down to DPP three times to get records that as a matter of policy and regulation, I should be entitled to, only to be told that I really have to wait until the permit's already issued. That's not acceptable, that's not the law. Finally, today, that was resolved, and we're hoping to get those documents. But this is of critical import. It is not something that can be delayed, nor is there any legitimate reason for delaying the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then, I believe Ian is, so we'll go ahead and recognize him and then go back to another speaker in favor. So, Ian.
Sure. Well, I want to thank everyone for this robust discussion. I really appreciated the testimony, I've tried my best to incorporate responses to it. I also want to thank the introducer, Claire. I just want to highlight that the need for housing is severe. You know, I hear at times that one is in favor of affordable housing, but they speak out against it when it's near them. And in this particular instance, we are talking about a buy-right development. In this resolution, I'm not quite sure, this is my way, I've talked to Claire before, and I encourage her to correct me on this. I don't believe there's any clear government action which we can ask for. DPP reviews plans based on the plan criteria. And, you know, testimony from neighborhood boards don't necessarily pull any strings or change the fundamentals. That is to say, whether or not we pass this resolution, it would be the same status quo, in my understanding, with no actual action directly being requested that can be responded to. On Monday, I attended a city council planning economic committee meeting at 6:00 PM at Kaemuki High School. I drove over an hour to get there, coming back from work in Y and I. Parking was ample, most of the city council was there. It was an in-depth presentation on the future of housing for our island about zoning and density for decades to come. Really, unfortunately, there were very few people in attendance. Housing must go somewhere. And the best way for us to ensure that housing isn't in our backyard is to be proactive in actually helping to lay the foundations and make the plans for where it can be better built. I just want to highlight a few statistics about why affordable housing is so critical. Hawaii lost sixty-seven thousand people moving out of the state between 2021 and 2022. We have the lowest millennial homeownership rate in the country. Across the country, majority of millennials are homeowners today, but only one in three here on the islands. You know, we also see that the majority of teachers leave within five years of working as a teacher, citing housing as the number one reason. Majority of all people from Hawaii with a college degree have already left. Fifty-five percent of native Hawaiians have left. And just the recent few years, this has created a hole in our budget in the hundreds of millions of dollars. This is a dire issue touching every other thing we need to do. There are better and worse placements for affordable housing locations. I'm not really here to dispute any of the individual claims from other testifiers in support of the resolution. I think they've done their homework. I just would like to highlight that, you know, in this sense, I don't think this resolution calls for any government action that could particularly be done. And the need for affordable housing is so urgent, that if we wanted to say, "We don't want it here," we should start by saying where we would want it in attending these meetings and being vocal in that. Because I think a good offense is the best defense. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ian. Could we, oh, we have a speaker in favor of the resolution? You could say, I'm sorry.
Bailey Maksuda.
Thank you.
Owner, resident, teacher. To your point, sir, if I was a teacher and you offered me ownership of a one-bedroom apartment that small, that would not do it for me. To your other point, none of us are saying we are against affordable housing. Low-income rent units that are just massively placed, wherever there's an economic opportunity for a developer, that's a different thing. This resolution needs to be done here and now because, as it's written, it will go to city council. And then, will be incorporated into governor's proclamation. So, it starts here, but that's where it goes. So, it doesn't just end here. But I would like to address something to the neighborhood board, and that is, you have a responsibility, right? Section two thirteen one oh one and one oh two, to provide for government engagement with citizens. That's your mandate. And governance by emergency proclamation effectively gets rid of that all the way down to here. So, this is it. This is the one forum where and get support for our concerns. And that's on you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, with a speech in favor of the resolution, do we have someone now speaking opposed to the resolution? Sam, are you speaking in opposition? Sam, you're muted.
Actually, I'm going to speak in support. Because everybody seems, I'm going to speak in support.
Okay, Sam.
The reason why, I read the resolution earlier.
Forgive me, Sam. I'm going to hold that thought and give the opposition a chance to speak before we come back to you.
All right.
Is there anyone willing to speak in opposition of the resolution? Okay, seeing none. Oh, actually, Ian, is your hand up to speak in opposition again?
Yeah, I wanted to correct two things. I didn't accuse the other individuals of being opposed to affordable housing. They claim to be in support of affordable housing. And that evidence of saying what your position is, is without me having proof, I accept it, you know. I just highlighted that I believe supporting affordable housing means going out and actually doing the work as well. And I just wanted to encourage that. Two, I think the individual who wanted to respond to my point as a teacher might not be familiar with the economic concept of sorting. So, for example, I mentioned a teacher might not want to live in this housing. But teachers today compete for the lowest-income housing across the state. And by creating affordable housing to those lower levels, that housing that someone else would have been competing with a teacher is now offset. There's an interesting economic principle at work here, a house for anyone is a house for everyone. When you build senior housing, it creates more housing opportunities for young people. Why is that? Well, seniors aren't competing with those same people in a similar degree. And so, I just wanted to speak up on this idea that this isn't just housing for the lowest income. All housing impacts and helps the overall pool of our housing needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. But we do have a question from online. Can the neighborhood board ask for an in-kind investment for that street and increase in turnaround space as a cul-de-sac? Increase or update in street lighting and reinforcement of the fencing boarding the Punch Bowl Hill? I'm afraid I'm unclear as to the reinforcement of the fencing boarding the Punch Bowl Hill. But yes, if we do make a motion to ask for, or motion or preferably a resolution, because the resolution, we get to actually put pieces of paper with exactly what we want in front of all of our elected officials. That would be, we can do that. However, in the case of the resolution, we would need to do that next meeting so that we have a chance to review it and for sunshine law, I believe. Thank you for the clarification, Amanda. So, bordering the Punch Bowl Hill. And now that we've had a speech against, I believe I said, Sam, you're willing to speak in favor, so go ahead.
Yeah, I'll speak in favor. I looked at the resolution before the meeting, so I read through it completely. And it had a lot of good points, especially since that's supposed to be a Punch Bowl district. And there was rules that they were supposed to follow, and they're not following the height limits. So, those are, those are real big considerations. And, you know, things like buses were not added in there. If I was anybody, I would put that in because they're going to, they're going to get rid of all the parking, and then they're going to expect everybody to put it down to the parking, you know, to the bus stop to get a ride. You know, the city's got to look at that. So, you know, the city's not doing their job when they, you know, they approve these, these buildings. They're, you know, you know, the Board of Water Supply, and, you know, the water pressure and all these other things have been brought up to our board before. And the question is, are we going to ask them to look into these things? So, for that reason, I'm going to ask that this, they table this bill until we get a response either from the city or from the neighbors with all the names of the whatever. So, I'm putting a motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay, so you're, okay, so Sam is motioning to table the resolution until the next meeting. John Silkris is seconding. So, now we So now we sorry, slightly out of order, so because we just had a new motion to table, so we're talking about tabling it. So, so that's why there was a motion to table the resolution. Yeah, the, uh, so the, I believe the motion to table.
Okay, so how I took it, I think the original motion was to adopt the resolution at first, right? Did you ever get that? Oh, and never, discussion. Okay, but anyways, since someone brought up a new motion, we had to vote on to see if we were approved to vote for that new motion and replace the original that was.
I guess I'll go ahead and recognize Tom Heinrich.
Thank you, Chair. As a point of parliamentary information, Tom Heinrich, speaking in my individual capacity, what's going on right now is there is a motion that has precedence, meaning when you look at Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, this particular motion to table the first motion is to be considered immediately without discussion. So if the decision is to table, then you stop further discussion on this and you move it to the next meeting. If the motion to table is not adopted, then you consider, excuse me, continue the discussion and continue the discussion and consideration of the main motion, which had been to adopt the resolution as presented. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom Heinrich. Okay, so seeing as there's no discussion, we'll go into roll call vote to see if the motion is to table or not.
I'm sorry, point of order or question? Are we not allowed to ask a question about procedure before we vote?
So I could repeat that?
Sorry, Corinne, it was very garbled. Could you repeat your question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't fully understand. We're not allowed to discuss anything further if we vote in favor of the motion to table. And that just seems like a waste since we have all these people here. I just had one more question, but I'm not, I'm not allowed to ask it if I vote. Is that correct?
Right, right. So, so if you vote to table, we will immediately end all discussion and we pick that up next meeting. If you vote against tabling it, then we will continue the discussion. So that is, yes, that is how that works.
And Sam, that's what you want, is to cut off all discussion this meeting?
Well, that was, well, that, well, that was the, that was the, yeah, the, the point of making the motion and then seconding it. So, yeah, so now we'll go ahead and continue with the, or start the roll call vote.
Okay, when I call your name, say I or nae if you're abstention. This is for tabling the item for the next meeting. Thomas?
Aye.
Corinne?
Abstain.
Sam?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Paul? Hugh? Jenny? Chuck?
Nay.
Sam?
Which one? Sam?
Sorry, Sam, you said I or nae?
Nay.
Nay, okay. Harris?
Nay.
Ken?
Nay.
Ian?
Let the people speak, nae.
Okay, Eric? Claire?
Nay.
John? He said aye and nae, Daniel?
Nay.
Okay, so with that, that was four for yes. Let me count this. Seven for no and one abstention. So it's for no. So we're gonna continue with this conversation.
Okay, so the, we'll go ahead and continue with, I believe we left off at speaker in favor. Before I give Claire another shot, was there anyone new who would like to speak on the, in favor of the resolution? Okay. Oh, sorry, I believe we have not recognized, oh, we'll go ahead since I did slightly wrong. So we'll go ahead with you first and then we'll go ahead with David online.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Peters and I'm a tenant at six seven zero Prospect Street. And what I've seen of that area is that it's very unsafe for walking. There are no sidewalks. We often get in the way of traffic. And there is a big problem with crime in the area that's not attended to, especially when we call for help. I don't see how making it more dense would be beneficial to the community. And as a teacher, I'm not even a full-time teacher. I'm part-time. I don't make very much money, but I've lived there successfully and affordably for over 10 years at six seven zero Prospect. By working with the landlord and living peacefully with my neighbors, it is possible to live affordably by prioritizing what you spend your money on. So what I will say about is that I have not competed with anybody else for housing. I don't know any teachers who are competing for housing. And I believe that people who have rental units, who are raising the price extravagantly, should be attended to. People who are raising their rentals by 200 or 300%, that should be regulated and not just simply building more buildings. And especially one that's a big high-rise as being suggested. I think also the public transit is a problem too. There's very little of that. And the nearest park has only broken facilities and cannot sustain a higher population. There are no parks nearby that are safe to go to or for families to spend time in. That's a big concern for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we'll go ahead and recognize David Chang from online.
Hi. Thanks for letting me talk. My name's David and I would say in general, I am pro development. I've been to a number of NIOP meetings and I'm not a NIMBY. But I do have to say, I know that something is gonna be developed over in that corner. It's gonna happen. It's inevitable, but this really should not be it. The number of units versus the number of parking is abusive. There's times that I've come home at night and had to drive around for a half hour and parked fairly far away to walk to my apartment. I don't know if you know this, but there's at least two different people living in their cars less than a block from where this place is being built. There are issues with that corner as a whole. It's a fatal corner. Someone died there just last year. And I know something's gonna be built there. I accept that. But really, the density of this thing is, does not make sense for the space. There's no level ground. There's no, if you're an old person, you live there, you're gonna be burdened because there's no way to get to a bus without going down a hill. It's just a recipe for disaster and I accept that something's gonna be built there. But it should be something that will accommodate the people who actually live there and meet their needs and not put an undue burden on everyone else who's already struggling around here. And to the point about people being opposed to the Wilder Puna Ho project when that was being built, at least that's on level ground with lots of bus access. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That was a speech in favor. Is there anyone willing to speak in opposition of the resolution? Seeing none, I believe I saw Chuck with his hand up. And then we've had quite a robust conversation. I believe, well, we can take a, after Chuck, we'll go ahead and take a closing statement by Claire. And we should move into calling the question.
Okay, I, I think all of us can agree that our home is probably the most sacred area that we have while we're here on earth. You know, we all want peace, we all want quiet, and we all want safety among many other things. I, I, I see, I'm trying to look at it from another perspective. You know, this Bill seven projects, I think most of them, and I stand corrected, most of them are passed without any public right there is wrong. So that needs to be corrected if it can be. And if it can't, then we gotta look at the officials that are responsible for this and also look at people that are going to support this kind of transparency that we all need, right? The other thing is this parking, and I know we got Denise coming up and we can talk about more of this stuff. But the other thing is, speaking with my, my constituents in my area and some people here at this, in this room, the parking thing is a farce. You know, I, I live across Pensametro. Pensametro is gonna have 29 units. It's five stories, 29 units. And guess how many stalls they're gonna have? Four or five? And we already strapped for parking over there. And then we have the bike lane, which I commented before, it's hardly used. And you know, that's a whole bunch of parking. The other thing is, is the, the management of the building. Where is the management of the buildings? I mean, Mr. Cass over here says, I don't know if there is a manager there, but it doesn't seem like it if he has activity every weekend. And you know, a medical examiner is called along with police and everything. I mean, this is bad stuff. So I would recommend that we look at some of these things that are not being transparent and are not being the, not on the side of us law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Chuck. I believe Corinne will take a question from Corinne really quick. Corinne?
Yeah, I've just, I heard conflicting things from different speakers who were in favor. So if this is a Bill seven thing, or is this a governor's proclamation thing? Because there are two different things. One is an ordinance passed by the city and county and the other. And if you, if anyone actually knows it's using both or one or the other, I would just wanna be a little more informed.
It's both, okay.
It's definitely both, but for the purposes of this, we brought the specific concerns into Mr. Ross's statement. It has nothing to do, and you insinuated and corrected yourself, thank you, that we were doing a not in my backyard thing. We were very specific about the concerns of the already very much overstressed area. We're just looking for a better design. Okay, so that's the neighborhood part. The other part is what Mr. Lee just addressed, and so it is both concerns.
I believe Denise, did you, Denise Matzbar, did you have an answer for that? Oh, no.
Good evening. Housing for City and County of Honolulu. So I just wanted to clarify that under Bill seven, there are certain allowances and flexibilities to development standards and construction standards that allow it to be built a certain way. So it has up to 60 feet is allowed. And up to, I think, 20,000 square feet. There's allowances on the setbacks and a bunch of other things. And the whole intent was to allow these small landowners to redevelop their properties and bring affordable housing into the community. But I'm really, really happy to hear that this community supports affordable housing, but they want it done in a responsible way. And I think, you know, and I did encourage this board to invite the developer because although it is a by right housing and we do need housing, I'm really, really happy to hear that. It's not that you don't want housing, you want it done responsibly. And so, you know, the parking is a big issue. I think the developer, you know, should, I would encourage him to come before this community and explain what, you know, what can be worked out. But this is all by right. So, you know, with the, in the special districts, Bill seven allows these developments to occur. It doesn't really need the governor's proclamation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Hope that brings some clarity to some of our questions. And then I believe we'll go to, go with the final word from Claire.
Thank you, everyone, for speaking. So we're all on the same page on the board. I remind you of our purpose in section two dash thirteen, one oh one. The purpose of this neighborhood plan and the neighborhood boards is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. This meeting is not about us. It's about the community that has stepped forward today. The community has stepped forward today in opposition of the construction project as it is currently proposed. We have never once said we are against, or the community has never once said they are against affordable housing. We have asked that the Punch Bowl Preservation District guidance be respected, that the community be respected. We ask that the developer cut down to forty the special district. We have asked Mr. Lam to come to this meeting and he did not come. I have been in contact with him. I've also been in contact with city council. Our avenue, the community's avenue is to come through the neighborhood board for this resolution in opposition as currently proposed. Again, we are not against affordable housing. We want it to fit into the community, to respect the community, and to follow the special district guidelines. I have not yet been able to ascertain who has the right to wipe out the special district guidelines. Did anyone actually have that authority? I do not know. So we need to address that to begin, you know, at some point in this conversation. But Bill seven was not intended to damage and defile existing neighborhoods. It should fit into existing neighborhoods. It should respect existing neighborhoods and expect, and respect Punch Bowl, which is also an Hawaiian historic space. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have had very substantial conversation on this topic. So I believe now would be an appropriate time to call the question.
Chair, I was directly referred to. I feel as though I should have a chance to respond. If not, I would, if not, I would request the chair remind people to direct comments and concerns towards them if they're not gonna give people who are addressed a chance to respond.
Yeah, sorry about that Ian. So, yeah, so just as a reminder, all comments and concern, or all comments are supposed to be directed towards me so that we don't accidentally start accusing other participants of various things. So, sorry Ian, I'll keep that on for next time and hopefully I'll be a lot better about that in the future. But I'll go ahead and call this to question so we could have the roll call vote.
Does someone wanna make a motion to?
We already have the motion on the table, correct? It's the whether to adopt.
I just wanna double check. So was it clear that made the first motion? Yes, okay. We're done. Okay, all in favor for the resolution? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I can't count that. Oh, sorry, with the roll call, yeah. Okay, Thomas?
Nay.
Corinne?
Nay.
Janelle? Sam?
Aye.
And then Richard? Abstain, okay. Paul? Hugh?
The resolution, right?
Doesn't make sense.
What?
The resolution they're proposing.
Hugh? Jenny? Chuck?
This is to adopt this resolution, right? Yes.
Yes. Sam Mitchell?
I think you already said aye, so you're looking at the other Sam.
Okay, so yeah, the other Sam wasn't here then.
No, yeah, aye, aye.
Oh, you're, you're aye.
Can you call Granger next time, please?
Thank you, okay, I got both of you for ayes. Hers?
Yeah.
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Ian?
Nay.
Nay, okay. Eric? Claire?
Aye.
Aye. John?
Aye.
Nathaniel?
Abstain.
Okay, let me count this. Okay, so with that, we have seven ayes, three nays, and one abstention. With that, um, this resolution pass. Thank you.
Tom Heinrich?
Abstentions, AIA really has that any vote, vote for those to do its care for the AIA, vote to vote, announce that they will be right now, there's a question, just now, one abstention, average.
Oh, no, you're right, yeah, so. Sorry, I didn't count Nathaniel's abstention, so let me correct that. So seven ayes, three nays, and two abstentions.
Uh, Chair?
Yep.
How many votes do we, do we need a majority of? So, we need how many? We would need nine ayes and we have seven.
Okay. Okay, so we need, all right, so double checking, so we have, so we need a majority of the board, uh, which is nine to pass the resolution. And we barely fail with just seven. We need two more. Um, so seeing as it fails, uh, or fails, did someone who voted against fail? Yeah, or, yeah, let's do it. Uh, who was the other? Okay, so uh, really, so would you be, I guess, would you be interested in changing the abstention to see pass or fail? No, okay. Okay. Uh, yes, there were a number of folks that are missing that did not vote. Yeah, it's a, it's a majority of the full board, so seventeen. We do have quorum, yes, there are there, there are currently twelve of us, twelve voted. So we do have quorum. Okay. Tom?
Thank you. Of uh, both neighborhood plan and parliamentary information, because most folks are not familiar with that. There's an overlay of rules. In a normal situation, if you will, for Robert's rules, it's a majority of the quorum present. Under the neighborhood plan and the sunshine law, which is chapter ninety two of four U revised statutes, this board is established with seventeen members. State law and the neighborhood plan require that a majority of the total seats for which the board is entitled. So seventeen, it's got to be nine votes, half is eight, you got to have more than half. So it's nine votes are necessary for any action, even the adoption or the approval of the minutes. Uh, nine votes are needed uh, in order to complete that, that action. So while there were more aye votes, they were still short of the necessary nine uh, for that. Okay, so the motion does not pass this evening. The board is entitled to reconsider it at another meeting or take another vote at this point or whatever. But that's, that's the difference in the threshold uh, for that. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom, for your parliamentary insight. Okay. Okay, uh, unfortunately, the motion failed. Uh, so we will, as we are now running out of time, uh, we'll go ahead and I apologize to everyone who showed up today. Uh, but we will definitely be taking this up again next meeting. So please stay engaged, uh, come back to us, and we'll definitely hold another uh, robust conversation, absolutely. That's a difficult question. No, please don't do that. Uh, so, um, but yeah, please, please show up again next month. I'm so sorry. Uh, we'll go ahead and move forward with the agenda uh, as there's a number of important things that are on this agenda as well. Uh, so moving forward with uh, fifteen twenty five Leaholeleho Street and the discussion of the squatters on the property. Uh, June, if you would mind, since uh, you come speak first. This is regarding the fires and the continuing safety hazard with fifteen twenty five on Leaholeleho Street.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's a daily concern. Um, when we wake up, if there's a fire.
If you could bring the mic around closer to your mouth.
Okay, can you hear me now? Yeah, so it is, it's a very critical, um. You know, it's, I've got to the point where, you know, I've uh, reached out to Dela Bellotti, to Calvin C's office um, to find out who owns that property. All we know is one person's in a care home and, you know, they're elderly people. And HPDs, you know, they, they try to do what they can do, but if there's still private property, no trespassing sign, they can't, you know, go in and, you know, arrest the people or whatever. And also, okay, so anyways, um, yesterday we spoke with some of the neighbors on Leaholeleho Street, and they are afraid, you know, a lot of elderly people that they don't want to step forward. But um, we're, I don't know, one of them was talking about um, taking legal action because this is ongoing, you know, from two, two years ago, two or three years ago, when they had that big fire on that property. You know, where that homeless lady had passed away. So our concern is the safety of the neighbors. Because that property, you know, it's all grass, yeah. So the scary part is if it burns the cars parked there, it's gonna be really bad, really bad. So, yeah.
Oh, so, um, so, yeah, no, so property, this is, if you recall, um, two, two years ago, I believe, there was a
Yeah, Ian Ross was on the news.
Yeah, two years ago, there was a fire, uh, kind of halfway up Leaholeleho on the right-hand side going Maoka. Um, and there was a, uh, incident with squatters in a house. They burnt it. And when Ian went on the news to talk about it, there was even a homeless person that ducked under the police tape and went inside. So that's the property we're talking about. Um, and it's definitely looking like it's turning into yet another uh, Kenau Street kind of a problem. Um, so I guess for um, Denise and I know Calvin say uh, his career is coming to an end very shortly, but if you're able to do any, uh, speak on the matter or anything at this particular moment, would you, uh, do you have any words? Denise? Okay, oh, awesome. Uh, well, I guess since we're on the agenda now, uh, if you could, would it be possible to report on that or? Thank you very much, Denise.
So no? So this responds to that concern on fifteen twenty five Leaholeleho Street. The report from HPD was that from July twenty fifth to August sixth, twenty twenty four, District One officers checked out the uh, property to address the concerns during their checks. Officers observed numerous individuals on the property. They were offered a homeless outreach and navigation for unsheltered persons services. Some individuals accepted and were placed on a waitlist. Uh, other individuals declined any service and left the property without incident. Offered, officers were unable to contact the property owner. Uh, and they did not uh, observe any no trespassing, trespassing signs. So officers will continue to check and make checks. We have, you know, limited because it is private property. Uh, and they'll continue to offer shelter and services and take appropriate enforcement action.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. You had, no, okay.
I was just gonna say, it's the same thing that we hear every month, Neil, and, you know, it's very, very difficult. If you want us to go and look into it as far as researching, who are the private property owners? We'll try our best at the next meeting.
Okay, please, uh, yeah, please, thank you. Uh, Chuck? Oh, no, okay. Uh, there's any, yeah, so other than, yeah, so basically, this is yet another case of turning into the what, fourteen, fifteen, no, fourteen, golly gee, I'm blanking on the Kenau Street one since it's been so long. Uh, but yeah, it's turning into another of that one, so that's why it's on the agenda. Uh, does anyone else have anything they would like to say further about the, Ian?
All right, Chair, I've been working with one of the neighbors, uh, and I've also been working with June, and June's been really fantastic on giving updates. It sounds like it comes down to a couple of things. One, the owner's not around, so they can't call nine one one. Two, neighbors can't call nine one one, report trespassing because they're not the owners. And when people do show up, there's a, there's no trespassing sign. I propose the following as something we should be pursuing. Uh, first and foremost, we should try to contact the owner. Uh, one of the listed names based, um, and this was Doreen's research, is Go Leahole LLC. And I do have some phone numbers uh, related to this. I just don't want to take unilateral action till we're discussed as a board. I might recommend um, that we ask them to install a no trespassing sign. The second thing, and I've been calling around to legal services around the state this month, but haven't found any which are willing to do this pro bono, is to get an agreement between the property owner, who I would assume does not want these squatters there anyway, and the neighbors to give them legal permission to call nine one one. Um, so I haven't been talking a little bit with some people from Councilmember Se's office, and they've been helpful in describing what this document might look like. But if anyone in attendance knows an attorney, I think this is a really good opportunity. I think this is a win-win. It would dramatically decrease the chance of uh, fires and other harms. So again, reiterate, no trespassing sign being installed and to allowing the neighbors and giving them legal permission to call uh, related to trespassing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ian. Do we have anyone else to speak on the matter before we move on? Okay, uh, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the presentation by Hiro. And Claire Santos would like to introduce him really quick.
Thank you, Hiro, for your long wait today. I've had the privilege of working with Mr. Toya since, let's see, when I was a ham radio operator, working with Department Emergency Management as a RACs. Emergency ham radio, and Hiro was deputy director then, now promoted to our great DEM uh, chief uh, director, correct? And we've worked together on a couple of hurricanes and Hurricane Douglas at Convention Center and stuff, being ready for hurricanes. We are seeing more and more high rises develop in our town. Do people know what to do if a storm hits? The power goes out, the pumping, pumping stations aren't working, your toilet's not flushing, you have no running water, no refrigeration. You're on the twentieth floor and you're sixty eight years old with bad knees. So I asked Hiro to please come and talk about that to our group, and here we go, thank you so much.
So both a very kind introduction and a grim introduction, but uh, uh, thank you, all of the chair, board members, and the engaged citizens of the Makiki Pantalas area. Uh, my name is Hiro Toya, I'm the director for the Department of Emergency Management. And, you know, I know, um, and Claire, thank you for the invitation. Uh, but I know there's a number of pressing issues that are right in front of your face that you're trying to deal with. So I really appreciate um, you taking the time out of this meeting to hear what I have to say. Um, so of course, living in Hawaii, we do have a, a very beautiful place that we get to live in and call this home. Uh, but it does come with risks. And uh, we do see that there's some increasing trends in terms of the kinds of disasters that we see here. And of course, most notably culminating the, the disaster on Maui last year with the extremely dry condition coupled with these extreme winds that we rarely see during the summertime. So I think everybody in here is pretty attuned to the fact that we have some significant vulnerabilities and risks as we live here. Um, but what makes us uniquely vulnerable is the fact that we're in the middle of the Pacific, tiny little islands in the middle of the Pacific, twenty four hundred miles away from the closest point in the continental US. Um, so part of our message is to try to get the community ready to for these kinds of emergencies, the big ones, where our logistical infrastructure may be impacted. We consume, and actually, some estimates, like ninety percent of the food that we consume comes in from outside of Hoi, uh, most of it coming in through the port of Honolulu. Uh, so in the event that the port of Honolulu is affected, our ability to get food, just basic commodities, is going to be compromised. So we encourage everybody to be aware of what the hazards that face us are and make a plan. And uh, as much as possible on the governments, and we're going to prepare and be able to respond. But, you know, you see on, even on day to day, first responders are stretched, right? So imagine if we have a significant disaster where the whole community is affected, the whole island's affected. Our ability as government to respond to each individual is going to be limited. Um, so it's really incumbent on those individuals who have the ability to prepare. And, and I want to emphasize that because I know that uh, day to day, every day is a struggle for some people, you know. Forty percent of the state's population is living below what's called the Alice threshold, asset limited income constrained and employed, right? Um, and eleven percent of the state's population is living in poverty. So when I say things like, make a fourteen day kit, that's just not possible for a lot of people, right? They're worried about where their food is going to come from, the next meal that they're going to put on the table for themselves and their kids. Uh, but that's not to say that you shouldn't do anything at all. Um, what I want to encourage everybody to do, if you can, put together a fourteen day supply. If you can't do fourteen days, do seven. If you can't do seven, do three. Something is better than nothing when we're faced with these significant emergencies where our ability to just access basic commodities could be impacted. So, um, I know there is a number of high-rise buildings in this area. I'm actually a resident of the uh, the area for this board, so um, the uh, the, the special consideration for condos is the fact that power outages means something different for condo dwellers than do for single homeowners, right? Um, it affects all of us in some way, um, especially those who are dependent on electricity to sustain life. And if you have medical devices, even a seat bat machine that you need electricity for, your life is going to be really significantly impacted. But we saw what happened in Chinatown, uh, a few, uh, it was, I guess, last month, you know, it's, it's been, you know, and uh, the, the high-rises in Chinatown losing power, what that meant, okay, first be a significant issue for those who have mobility challenges. Um, and, you know, Claire, you mentioned the twentieth floor, right? So, you know, if you live on twentieth floor, that's challenging for anybody to have to haul stuff up and down. Not only do you not have power, your refrigerator's not working, so it means you have to make more frequent trips to get food and commodities. But one thing that was maybe not anticipated for a lot of folks was the fact that they would also be out of water. Um, and uh, the border water supply, they pump the water to those buildings, to the high-rises, but each building has its own pumping system to pump water up to the higher floors. So what, what I would encourage is for those who are living in condos to engage with the association, to really look at for your particular building, what are the vulnerabilities that you have? And yes, there is And yes, there is other more pressing issues that have to be addressed now, like insurance costs are skyrocketing. These issues have to be addressed. But also look at what you can do to mitigate impacts of these uh events uh so that you can. Have a way to survive when some kind of emergency happens, right? So we look at it the same way for from the city and county perspective too. We look at not only what do we need to do to respond to an emergency when something happens? And so my department's responsible for coordinating with all the city departments, with the state, with nonprofit partners. Uh, to uh manage emergencies, but. We also look at what are the opportunities that we have to mitigate impacts from disasters so that we don't actually have to do the response as much, right? So. These things actually include some policy level things like uh, building codes, for instance. You know, those are passed through the city council and it's meant to mitigate the impacts from emergencies so that. People don't have to evacuate for a hurricane, for instance, right? If your home is built a certain way, you might not have to evacuate. Um, so we look at things from a policy perspective, but also uh some, you know, concrete, brick and mortar type projects too. Um, how do we mitigate flooding? So uh, the Alawai Flood Control Project is another example where. We may take some mitigated action so that if we do have a significant rain event, well, those people living in near those areas, uh, their homes won't be affected, right? Our ability to respond to those events, if we don't mitigate them, is going to be limited. Um, so same thing with if you're a condo dweller or even a single homeowner, that there are certain actions that you could take. Um. Everybody on how to do that. Uh, but uh, really encourage everybody to uh prepare for themselves and their their communities. Uh, because we always say that it's a matter of when, not if, uh, for these types of events to happen. So. Um, what I did today, I I actually brought some resources. Um, there's a bunch of flyers over there, so I just um explained a few of these. Um, the the first one is um, uh, let's see. Uh, we have a little pamphlet for what to put into your fourteen day disaster kit. Um, and the other one that's um significant for us, um, in light of. Some of the recent incidents we've seen and HFT reported, you know, wildfire is not a huge risk in this area. Uh, but there are certain types of emergencies where you have to go in a hurry, right? So. You're not going to bring a fourteen day kit with you when you have to leave in a hurry. But you want to have your essential items with you so that it's packed and ready to go and just grab a bag and get out of the area. Yeah, uh, next one is um, uh, what I did want to also share is that we are updating our local hazard mitigation plan. So I I mentioned that. Um, you know, we want to mitigate these hazards as much as possible, so we reduce the need to respond to them, right? Um, so there is going to be some public engagement for this planning process. So. Um, I encourage everybody to pick up one of these flyers. There are some surveys and stuff that you can access now. And also schedules for future meetings where we share additional information on this. Okay, uh, then we have um, uh, this emergency preparedness guide from Hawaiian Electric. Um, so for years, they've been actually publishing a much thicker guide, but this is more of an abbreviated version for it, and hopefully it's more accessible to folks. Uh, and then finally, um, uh, Claire did ask about the special consideration for Kupuna uh for disaster preparedness. So we have a flyer. Uh, for Kupuna preparedness and you know, it's, it's really the same as everybody else, but just, I think, placing more emphasis. On kind of having this personal support network, you know, as we age, um, kind of recognizing what uh. What what our own physical limitations might be and where we might need to get some help. Okay, so I'll I'll leave that with you folks. Um, and then just finally, um, I I know that um HFD reported out on some of this as well, but. Your tax dollars are at work. Um, there's actually already a number of resources that are available to you. Um, so just from Honolulu Fire, if you go to fire.honolulu.gov, um, they have a little tab that says request. Uh, for those that are in condos, you can actually request HFD to come out onsite and to work with you. To develop your condo evacuation plan. So thinking about the people who might have mobility issues. Um, how do you plan and prepare for evacuations? HFD will come out and do that for you. Um, they also do. Signature training, kind of have like a three for one uh training session with your condo association or residence uh through HFD. Um, and then finally, um, we have some resources available through the Department of Emergency Management. Um, we have what's called the Community Emergency Response Training. It's it's actually three Saturdays. Do get some disaster training, uh, hands-on training. You can do that as an individual. Or uh, if you want to sign up as a group, I'm more than happy to accommodate you. And then last thing is, you know, if there's a presentation request, um, we'd be more than happy to come out to your community to do that. So. Um, with that, um, I I hope um what I said has resonated resonated with you guys. Um, if it did, um, please tell your friends and neighbors. Um, if it didn't and you have complaints about me, please direct them to Denise. And I'd be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. I believe we only have time for three questions. That is uh due to my terrible time management on the earlier issues. Uh, we'll go ahead and start with Harris. I believe I saw his hand first.
Yeah, thank you very much, Hero. I just just wanted to let you know, you know, some of the things that we're working on because. This area, this this neighborhood board area, a lot of vertical buildings, so. Uh, we're putting together a resilience hub. So in our area in Kenau, we're partnering up with the Honolulu Museum of Art. So with Honolulu Museum of Art with the condos, we're creating a evacuation plan that allows for a safe uh resting spot. So. We're preparing already like bedcots, chairs, cellphone chargers, water, all of that. And then. And the adjacent food establishments, whether it be Domino's Pizza. Uh, Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, they're all going to be able to provide food in the event of these fires or first shooter type of events. So HFD. And HPD, and we'd love to have you involved because I think uh, especially in this area, having a a resilience hub plan. Uh, that you never use would be very good to have.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that. And you know, I think it's um often difficult to do things like. At the neighborhood board scale for like the entire area, but if we can target some geographic areas, you know, we can really do some meaningful things. So thank you for that.
Okay.
Thank you for coming. Um, that's great information. I was wondering, because a lot of these brochures are geared to what. Uh, owners or residents can do to put kits together for themselves, but for like Kupuna especially. Are there any programs where we can actually put kits or have them available for other people?
So. Sorry, so if I understand correctly, to for somebody to put together kits for Kupuna and to provide them for, okay.
Yeah, the items that you have listed and some of it, which is acceptable, but many of the other items. Could, you know, we could probably create an inventory and create these and then it would be a distribution. But is there anything similar to that already?
Um, no, we haven't organized anything like that, but you know, that I think that would be a great initiative for a community to take on to uh do a um. A sort of a preparedness event where you gather donations and maybe put together kits for for other folks who might have that need.
Okay, uh, we have time for, I believe, one more question. If anyone else has any question for. Hiro Toya before. Okay, hearing and seeing none. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, so for the discussion of holding a candidate forum for the October meeting and establishing a forum PIG for this candidate forum. Uh, so I was advised that we don't necessarily have to hold a have a PIG for this, but uh. So the current plan that I have envisioned is that we, uh, in the October meeting, we call a recess. And during that recess, we have uh candidates come in and uh. Answer some questions that we may have of them. Uh, a good starting point is the questions that we've asked candidates in the past. Uh, so I'm going to look to that as guidance. Would anyone like to help me with setting up this forum or uh? I'm perfectly willing to go it alone. I see Ian Ross with your hand up.
All right, thank you very much. Uh. To say, you know, if you want to do this, I would be uh in favor of supporting. Uh, here's the basic question though, which offices are we looking to include? Uh, many of the elections were largely settled during the primary election. So I think some of the ones that are still open, if we wanted to consider like OHA, for example. But I'm not sure what other races uh will be occurring that overlap with our area. Uh, I'm, you know, we of course do have congressional and senate. Um, you know, uh. If we feel we can get the candidates for those races, it may be worthwhile. Um, but that's largely, I think, the races that are going to be on the ballot. Uh, we do have a ballot initiative related to amending the state constitution as relates to marriage. Um, you know, maybe we have a debate on that or something, but I'm just not quite sure what the. If Chair, if you want to tell us what you're envisioning uh as what's included, uh, I might be willing to help. I wouldn't be willing to help no matter what, but I'd like to hear what you're you're envisioning.
Yeah, so uh, I did envision the local races only, uh, so not the the national congressional. Um, so though, yeah, presidential, I mean, if we could get those uh candidates to show up, but I think that's a shot towards the moon. Um, so yeah, uh, local local races only, uh, and then the primaries just dropped, so I haven't had a chance to look at the primaries, but. Um, yeah, I'll I'll work together with you on on that one.
Do we, do we have a single local race?
I'm sorry?
Do, are there any local races at all?
That's a great question. When I.
I I believe we do not have any local races.
Oh, really?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Uh, Richard?
Yeah, I'm willing to volunteer and we can make, and once we have a a committee, we can make, we can discuss this. We don't have to, you know, determine that tonight.
Yeah, okay, uh, so so it sounds like we want to establish kind of a a formal PIG. Uh, so we'll go ahead and. Do that, since it's on the agenda. Um, so uh, we'll do that with, um, so PIG to look at. Uh, establishing a candidate forum, and I believe there's a number of volunteers here. So Ian, myself, Jonas Sealquist and Richard Kowano. I don't believe I see anyone else interested in joining this PIG. So uh, we'll go ahead and. Establish that. I believe we don't need to hold a vote, so.
Uh, just a a point of, I guess, information, but uh, my understanding of permitted interaction groups is that. Uh, you know, there's a three-step process at the first meeting here, and this is August. We create the PIG.
Yep.
Then the next process is for the PIG to report to their findings.
Yep.
My understanding is that the third step, now can that be adopting the report the same day, or is it that it needs to go then to the next month? Mine is a three-step process.
Right, so it needs to go to the next month, but that's.
And which would be, which would be October to adopt the report. So we wouldn't be taking our action to adopt this. Until the day that we would have planned to have it.
Right?
Okay, yeah, just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, so I believe the timing should be spot and bang on if we uh. Do a good job of it. Okay, is there any further discussion on this matter?
So if we go forward with this, we need to start like yesterday. We have, we have to have a meeting.
Yeah, so yeah, so we.
Tom, is this even possible at this point?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, so we'll go ahead and move on. I don't see any other further discussion on this matter, so we'll go ahead and move on to the discussion of the establishment of a dog park. Uh, I believe uh Ian might have had an update on that.
Yes, uh, so very, thank you very much. Um, Councilmember Tyler DeSantos Tam shared uh some documents for us to fill out to request this dog park. Uh, Chair, if you and I can just make some time in the next week or two to uh collaborate on that, I think it could be very worthwhile. Uh, and you know, uh, really simply, I think there's, you know, now that we've passed a resolution, simply filling out that paperwork. Might suffice as our our next step. Thank you. Oh, and I'll add, I believe the deadline is sometime next month.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ian. Uh, does anyone else have anything to say about the dog park? Seeing none, uh, we'll go, oh, uh, yep, seeing none, we'll go on to the follow-up on the opposition to the Peacoine mini park sale. Uh. I, I believe Ian, I. Saw that one as well.
Thank you very much. Uh, the city council recently passed a resolution permitting the sale. Um, my understanding is at the meeting, our position was uh portrayed as being mixed. Now, I understand members of the board have very variety of opinions. Uh, I take. Um. I take offense to this characterization, um, because I believe as a board, we speak as one voice. So when we pass a resolution, that is the stated position of the board. Uh, you know, we're one of the boards that doesn't include a tally for how much we voted each way. We have a winner-take-all system to make our voice as strong as possible. Uh, that's something which we could change, but we haven't. And so my understanding is that the city council, our position was portrayed as. Being unsure of what we'd want in terms of a sale or not a sale. Uh, so I think that's something which is of the board's concern and should be very frustrating. Anyone who ever introduces a resolution who might get a vote or two against. Should also uh potentially be frustrated uh if our position can be watered down as such. But they are apparently moving forward with the sale. I'm not sure if there's additional things uh and actions we can take as a board. Um, but this was the clearest one opposing at the city council level. Uh, I've certainly got some angry uh emails from constituents as a result of all of this. Um, but I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update, Ian. Uh, does anyone else have, would anyone have anything to say on the, oh? Oh, you'll bring it up in the, okay. Uh, okay, uh, moving on with the discussion of the lack of safety of the laundromat on Lejo Lejo. So that is our only. Laundromat in the area. Uh, unfortunately, it is badly upkept and the door actually fell on. Uh, one of the ladies who uh was here earlier, and I, but I guess she wasn't able to stick around and uh speak about it. So it's dangerous. It's our only laundromat. Uh, and I guess really, the question goes to our city council member or city city folk. What? What can we do about it? What can be done about it? Um, they don't, I mean, obviously, there's no answer. Right this second, but uh, I guess we'll follow up with that in the future, since like I said, that is our only public. Does, would anyone like else have anything to say? Oh, oh, forgive me, I missed Amanda Kirby speaking about Peacoine? Oh, the Peacoine Mini Park. Yes, sorry. Uh, we'll go ahead and double back and really quick.
Hi, I am so sorry. Thank you. It'll be very quick. Yes, um, on August seventh, they did push forward the resolution. Um, I was just wondering if um, since the stated um neighborhood board. I don't even know if it was a motion, but it was still, you know, some opposition to the sale. Do you know if once a resolution is passed um by the city council, can we ask for an amendment for a deed restrictions to at least protect that green space? Um, simply because uh, due to the lack of enforcement and previous surface of the people that bought it, it just kind of worries me. That that green space is not going to be as protected. And also, as Ian mentioned earlier, keeping funds in the Kiki, that wasn't even added either. And I think that's extremely important. If we're losing a green space, we at least should be able to use some of, or at least ask. Um, us for those funds to be kind of maintained to help improve the green space in the Kiki. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions. So uh, we did pass a resolution in opposition to the sale. And in our resolution, I believe we actually addressed all of your concerns that we are concerned with the uh possible. Removal of green space. Uh, and I believe uh, that's unfortunate, the only point that I caught, I believe you had more. Uh, and I apologize for missing.
I apologize for missing out.
No, you're so fine. Um, since since it's passed, is there anything, do you know, that we can do to ask for an amendment of a deed restriction or anything like that?
Calvin say?
Amanda, that could be done with the Department of Corporation Council. Once the sale has been consummated, with the deed being transferred over, a provision may be requested if the buyer is interested in accepting.
Oh, sorry, could you repeat that a little closer to the microphone?
If you could go and talk to the Corporation Council, once, you know, the approval has been approved, the resolution, and I did share with Amanda the position I took. Because I I did my own homework too. May of this year, May. Well, a support suppose or oppose proposed sale, no board action was taken. The board would like to propose buyers to attend a future meeting. This is May, June. June minutes, motion to suppose, support or oppose proposed sale of mini park. Councilmember Sez, share the letter to all of you. Relating to the proposed sale of Peacoine Mini Park, the board discussed the idea that the park may become private or if purchased. No board action taken. July. This is in the minutes, motion to support or oppose proposed sale of Peacoine Mini Park. Member Ross spoke on the different options regarding his issue and recommended that the board think about what stance it would like to take. Member Kowano and Lee support the sale of the park, if I stand corrected. Member Baldwin opposes the sale of the park and brought up the related issue of homeless. of homelessness and the need for affordable housing. Member Santos is unsure on first stance. Member Mitchell opposes the sale. And finally, Member Ross shared his ideas to request the funds. Funds from the sale go back towards the parks in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. I stand corrected.
No, I really tried to help Amanda. I was the one that asked the questions to her when she testified. But this project or this sale goes back prior to my time and our time being on the board. I believe it was 2006 or 2009. And at this point in time, as far as my career, I, I was figuring board members, is it now the time to fish or cut bait, or else people are going to say, see? The board never do anything, the council never do anything. You make the call. Harris and Chuck. The other big issue I wanted to bring up now, can I just share my presentation very quickly?
Yeah, well, we'll, yeah, we're running out of time, so yes.
You just put the Tanlis, uh, Community Association in regards to the tree that is blocking the road still yet. The city will not touch it until we get some form of tort reform. We should not be the ones to go and go and take all that debris away, affect the side of the slide where the home, where the private owner is. And then we become liable because we took the debris. Just think about it. We are now going into a private property doing all of this on behalf of the residents who need the access. So I'm just bringing this up because there will be other to consider would be some tort reform. Can you give the city the immunity to go into the heights? Or this slight area where the trees are? It would do it, but we would not be held liable if there is future consequences. And the other point is that it's a jurisdictional thing for Mr. Kojima and others up Tanlis because of who is in charge of debris that has occurred. The parked cars, the homeless, et cetera. One is state and one is, you know, they're saying this city, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Calvin. Okay, so we are running short of time, so we'll start speeding through here. Uh, would we happen to have, uh, the Governor Josh Green's representative, Russell Pang? Oh, Ian, see your hand. Sorry, Ian, I see your hand up.
I included a link to our April agenda meeting where we oppose the sale of the mini park. Thank you very much, Chair.
Oh, shoot. Uh, we'll just nobody had anything to say, so we'll go ahead and, yeah, uh, okay, yeah, sorry. Continuing on with, uh, Russell Pang.
Yes, uh, aloha, everybody. Thank you for having me this evening. Uh, I don't have anything specific to, uh, address. Um, I will put the governor's newsletter into the chat room, a link to his newsletter. And, um, you can see a summary of some of his activities over the past month, including all of the bills, the 253 bills that were signed into law last month. So I will throw it in there. And I'm also very encouraged to hear that the Nice Neighborhood Committee is going to be meeting with, uh, John Mizino and Sam Moku. I know that's a top issue for this, um, neighborhood board and for the community as it is for the governor. So, uh, we monitoring that very closely and I look forward to hearing more at the next meeting. Um, if anybody has any questions, uh, for the governor's office or the administration, I'm happy to, um, I'm happy to take them if there's time. Thank you.
Okay, uh, do we have any questions for the governor's representative? Okay, one.
Quickly, um, I, I don't know if you were present during the early part of this meeting when, um, we were raising concerns about the 1617 Olapai project. Um, I wanted to know if there's a means of getting an audience with the governor or governor's representatives, so our community can raise this issue and, and address possibly, um, taking these issues into account prior to the governor's next proclamation.
I will bring that, uh, question to the governor's office. Uh, I will check on that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Pang. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, in the interest of time, we'll go ahead and, uh, thank you very much, uh, Russell Pang. And moving on to, uh, do we have a representative from Senator Carol Fukunaga's office? Oh, I'm sorry. She sent me an email saying she couldn't make it. Uh, she sent me a newsletter. I believe I have to add it to the Google Drive. Uh, if it hasn't already been done already, so I'll do that. Um, and then representative from Dela Baladi's office, Tom Heinrich.
My legs are getting tired. Aloha, everyone. Tom Heinrich on behalf of Representative Dela Baladi. I make this real quick. Uh, she thanks everyone for her reelection, uh, so that, uh, she will not be on the general election ballot. Um, uh, so for the next term, which is November 5, 2024 to, I think it's November 8, 2026. Uh, she, uh, will represent, uh, this area, uh, House District 26. Uh, secondly, uh, is as, uh, Chair, uh, still at this time of the House Committee on Health and Homelessness. Uh, there is a number of things that she talked to me about just this week in terms of a schedule that she is putting together, uh, for informational briefings on a number of health-related topics as well as site visits for the members of, uh, the Health Committee. Uh, and interestingly, we'll try to coordinate as well with the Committee on Human Services. All the members of both of those committees happen to be the same individuals, but slightly different focus on subject matter. Um, and then two last things. The first is just an early particularly focused on the Papakolea area of this, uh, Neighborhood Board District. Uh, but we are setting up, uh, a, uh, community meeting, uh, for Tuesday, September 24 at 6:30 PM. Tuesday, September 24, 6:30 PM at Stevenson Cafeteria, having to do with little fire ants and a couple of other things. Unfortunately, very much necessary because of some reported outbreaks in the Papakolea area. Um, I do not have any information that it was related to the outbreak aggravated by the Punho Carnival earlier this year. Uh, and then lastly, uh, we are already getting requests relating to potential, uh, bills, uh, or other district, uh, yeah, interests having to do with capital improvement projects or whatever. It is not too early to communicate that to any of your elected officials. Uh, it gives us a little bit more time, uh, between now and the end of the year. Okay, so always feel free to give a call to our office or email us, uh, whatever. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Tom Heinrich. In the interest of time, uh, if you have any questions or concerns, please take it up with Tom outside the board meeting. Uh, moving on, uh, do we have a represent, a representative from, uh, Representative Scott Nishimoto's office? Seeing none, uh, do we have someone from Representative Andrew Garrett's office? Seeing none, uh, Mayor Rick Bonjiarney's representative.
Thank you for being here.
Aloha. Good evening. Denise Sisari Matzubra, Office of Housing for the City. So the mayor has his newsletter. Hope that you all got it. Um, I did want to highlight in there because, uh, Member Nakamoto is working on the Nice Neighborhood, uh, effort initiative. So there's a lot of homeless services in there. Another, uh, Respet just opened up, uh, Ala Respet, which is the former First Hawaiian Bank on King Street. Um, Waikiki Vista I've reported on before. Leahy Hospital is another one I reported on before. There's going to be another one at Evilay Center, uh, that's going to open up to house almost a, a thousand uh, homeless in the future during the interim. So a lot of movement there. I did want to report back on the concern, uh, about the Makiki Skate Park lighting. Uh, Department of Parks and Recs did get back to, uh, the installation of street lights in and around the Makiki District Park Skate Park is not recommended by our Design and Construction Branch as the sounds of the activities will be disturbing to the nearby residents during evening hours. They also mentioned that the bright lights will affect the freeway and nearby residents. So DPR has contacted the State, the Department of Transportation about this, and they will be sending out an inspector to evaluate the area. Uh, I know there was a lot of talk about, uh, Bill, uh, 7 on Ernest Street, that project, and I want to thank Mr. Kaz for his patience because it appears that, that gravel pit was finally addressed. I wanted to give some pictures to the floor. I just want to look to Mr. Kaz to make sure it did because they told me it got covered with, uh, concrete and some dirt, and thank you so much for your patience and for bringing it up to this, uh, forum. Um, next on the list was the houseless at Cartwright Field. HPD did respond from July 25th to August 6th. Officers made checks in the area of Cartwright Field to address the concerns. During the checks, the officers observed a group of, of people who voluntarily left the area with their belongings. No other violations were observed. Officers will continue to make checks and take appropriate enforcement action. We talked about Lejo Lejo. Uh, I think there was one more item about the Peaco Mini Park. I did, because I saw, uh, the opposition, uh, and I saw parts of the, the, um, hearing. I did talk to, uh, the director for DPR and she, um, said that they looked at this parcel, you know, and at less than 5,000 square feet under a freeway. They determined that it's just not a viable location or size for a park. It's too small to activate. Uh, you can't do pickleball, can't do community garden, you need parking to make it work. But she said the good news is they invite you to work with them on more suitable areas. They mentioned they are working with you on areas for a dog park. I think, uh, dog park requires at least 30,000 square feet, and I think that's why she's looking at that Punho wild. So I report this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, in the interest of time, if you have any, uh, concerns or questions for Denise, uh, please take it up out, outside the board meeting. Moving on to, do we have a, uh, Calvin say spoke already? Uh, so do we have a representative from Councilmember Tyler De Santos Tam's office?
Sorry for the delay. Uh, hi, everyone. So very quickly, as time, Tom Heinrich already mentioned, we are collaborating with, um, Representatives Takana Uchi, Fukunaga, and Baladi, uh, Senator Fukunaga on the, um, Little Fire Ant Meeting that will take place on September 24th at Stevenson Middle School. Um, we had a request that came into our office, um, that mentioned replacing the snow parking signs on, uh, Olapai Street. So we, um, contacted DFM and they have put in a service request order for replacing the signs. So that's progress on signage there. Um, and then regarding the discussion on 1617 Alap, um, Olapai Street. Um, we have been corresponding with, with DPP on getting more details on the capacity issues and infrastructure issues and questions that you all are speaking about. Um, we will reach out to Paul Lamb. I know a few of you have mentioned you've tried to, um, kind of capture his attention, and I think we're gonna, we're, we're gonna also pursue, um, seeing if we can communicate with him on, um, coming before the board as well. But, uh, that's my report. The newsletter's in the, in the chat and, um, I'm here afterwards if you guys need questions. Have any questions?
Tom?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Robin, just a quick question. Do you have a date for the, uh, city council public hearing on the primary urban center development plan presentation that will take place, uh, at Corn and, uh, Corn and the Core, uh, Middle School in September?
Yes, let me put that information in the chat right now. I can also, I'll also email you as well, Tom.
Okay, and then, uh, really quick, Claire?
Really, really quick correction, correction, Robin. Um, I was the one who contacted you folks about the no parking sign, but kind of nothing was happening, so I used the Honolulu 311 app and the sign has been replaced, but thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you. So that there's a little delay in the communication between us and the department, but thank you so much, Claire. I appreciate it.
Good to hear. Uh, thank you very much. If there's any other questions or concerns for, uh, the, um, Tyler's office, be sure to take them up outside the board meeting. Moving on to resident and community concerns, I believe there is one person who'd like to make a quick announcement.
Uh, yeah, hi, everyone. Um, great meeting tonight. You know, I was tuning in. Um, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, um, potential improvements, site improvements to Makiki District Park and Makiki Community Garden. Um, you know, I think in the context of the Peaco Mini Park Sale, um, we're looking forward to working with DPR for potential improvements to the community garden. Um, sorry, I forgot to introduce myself. My name's Adam Strubeck. I'm, uh, an officer with the Makiki Community Garden. Um, so we saw that this was actually added as a, um, item in the latest budget, um, by Councilmember Say, so we appreciate the Councilmember adding that. Um, but this has also been added to previous years' budgets and never, um, the funds have never been, you know, allocated for it. Um, so I was hoping maybe at the next meeting, we could add it as an, as a board item that discussing further potential improvements to the Makiki Community Garden, um, which has remained pretty much static since its founding in 1975, where the surrounding community has grown in such a, in such a big way. So, um, I'd appreciate further discussion on this, and I'm happy to make a presentation to the board if needed. Um, and yeah, thank you for your time. Sorry to, you know, squeeze in at the very end, but I appreciate everyone sticking around.
Thank you very much, Adam. Uh, moving on, uh, community reports, uh, neighborhood security watch.
Uh, nothing, um, significant to report at this time.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Uh, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, Jones Sealquist. Okay, uh, so we'll go ahead on to announcements. The next regular meeting, uh, the next meeting of the Makiki Lower Punch Bowl Tanlis Neighborhood Board Number 10 is scheduled to be held on Thursday, September 19th, 2024 at 6:00 PM at Makiki District Park and online via WebEx. The meetings can be viewed on Olelo Focus 49 at 9:00 PM on the first Friday of the month and again on the fir- PM. You can follow us at, uh, facebook.com/makikienb. That's makikienb. Or remember contact information, go to HTTPS slash www.honolulu.gov slash ncl slash nb10. Motion to adjourn. And we are yeah, adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.